Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for September 18th, 2023. We do not have Councilmember Robertson here with us tonight. We had a very successful wine walk last weekend, put on by the Old Bellevue Merchants Association and our city staff. They worked very hard to actually close off a portion of Main Street so people could enjoy walking around with their glass. Well, actually, you can't walk with your glass. You had to drink it inside the facility, but walking around and not worrying about cars. And so it was very successful, and I wanted to congratulate the staff for all their work on that. And I know the city manager's dream was always to see what it would be like to have a portion of old Main Street closed, and it was awesome. City Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Thank you, Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers Zahn.
Here.
And Councilmember Robertson is absent.
Please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have three proclamations tonight. The first one is National Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation, which will be read by Councilmember Lee, and it will be received by representatives from a youth program called Latino Heat, which stands for Espanos en Acción Together, which is part of the Youth Eastside Services. And I think we have Anthony Nunez coming to accept the award tonight. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the culture and contributions of Americans tracing their roots to Spain, Mexico, Central America, South America, and the Spanish-speaking nations of the Caribbean. And whereas the observation started in 1968 under President Lyndon Johnson, it was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period beginning every year on September 15th. And whereas the month of September is significant because it marks the anniversaries of independence for the Latin American countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, which start on September 15th, Mexico on September 16th, and Chile on September 18th. And whereas Hispanic residents represent Bellevue's third-largest population group comprising about 7% of the population. And whereas Bellevue is welcoming community, and National Hispanic Heritage Month is an important reminder of how much strength we draw as a region from our immigrant roots and our values as a nation of immigrants. And whereas the cultural, educational, and economic influence of Hispanic community members enrich all aspects of life here in the Puget Sound region and throughout the east side. Whereas Bellevue welcomes the linguistic, familial, and social wealth shared by all the Hispanic communities and throughout the cross-cultural center without wars, we invite the public to learn about the diversity within this community. Now, therefore, I, Conroy Lee, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, to hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2023, as National Hispanic Heritage Month, and call upon all Bellevue residents to observe this month and celebrate the contribution of Hispanic neighbors with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities, including a public performance of Living Voices, La Causa, in City Horse Council Chamber on Thursday, October 12th. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Anthony Nunez, would you like to come speak? And then, you know what? We'll do pictures after the other two proclamations, so I'll ask you to come back for a picture.
So, actually, my name is Daniel. Anthony Nunez is ready to play, so I think it will be a commission on being happy for him.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Yeah. So, thank you so much, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. I'd actually like to extend the invitation of La Causa, a performance happening on October 12th, open for the public. So, the guests here, I welcome them to come join us. At 6:30, there's going to be a Danza Azteca, a dance performance, as well as the Living Voices performance. So, please come join us, and yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Stick around. Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, on behalf of all of the Latino Heat members and of all, you know, Latino citizens or people who live in Bellevue, thank you for giving us this opportunity. I appreciate that.
Thank you. All right, stick around. The next one is World Alzheimer Day, which will be read by Councilmember Barksdale, and I think Abigail Brown from the Bellevue Network on Aging will be here to accept that.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Whereas it is important to honor the dignity of thousands of people in Bellevue impacted by Alzheimer's disease and other types of dementia, diseases for which there is currently no proven means of prevention, treatment, or cure. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is a growing public health crisis in Washington, 120,000 people in the state are now living with Alzheimer's disease, relying on nearly 300,000 unpaid family caregivers, providing 434 million hours of unpaid care and support to their loved ones. And whereas in 2023, an estimated 6.7 million people in the United States, 65 and older, are living with Alzheimer's disease, and the Alzheimer's Association expects that number to more than double by 2060, unless medical breakthroughs lead to the prevention, slowing, or cure for Alzheimer's disease. And whereas Alzheimer's impacts are universal and not restricted by location, income, or identity, and recognizing the dignity of individuals while also promoting a better understanding of the disease can help individuals, families, and caregivers. Whereas World Alzheimer's Day takes place annually on September 21st and is a day during which Bellevue community members can join others from across the globe to raise awareness and challenge the stigma that surrounds Alzheimer's. Now, therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim September 21, 2023, as World Alzheimer's Day. In Bellevue, and urge all residents to join in this observance and learn more ways to get involved or donate in support of the care, support, and research that helps our neighbors and family members facing Alzheimer's by visiting ALZWA.org.
Thank you.
I don't have a long set of prepared comments. This is personal for me. Some of you already know this. I'm a longtime caregiver of a parent who had Alzheimer's for more than a decade, and I have two other family members, aunts, that also had dementia. And so this means a lot, and I wanted to just extend my thanks and the thanks on behalf of the Bellevue Network on Aging, which I'm a chair. Thank you for this acknowledgement, this acknowledgement for individuals and families and caregivers of people who have Alzheimer's or some form of dementia. Thank you.
Thank you for your work on the Bellevue Network on Aging. So, have a seat, stick around, we'll do a picture together. And next up, we have the National Service.
Could I say something here?
Oh, sure.
Yeah. I just wanted to say my appreciation as my wife died with Alzheimer's two years ago, and I appreciate this very much, and I don't have my mic on. Just wanted to say I appreciate this very much, and we hope that we can make progress. My wife died from Alzheimer's two years ago, and it's just not, not a, anyhow, it's really great to see the community come together and work on this. We'll conquer it at some time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. Next is, we have the National Service Dog Month proclamation, read by Councilmember Stokes and accepted by Naomi Martini and her service dog Windsor.
Okay, thank you. This proclamation, whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act protects the rights of protected populations to access public spaces, including access for individually-trained service dogs doing work or performing tasks for the benefit of people with a disability. And whereas, in the United States, only 16,000 service dogs from accredited training programs exist nationwide, and the need is growing. And whereas, a number of nonprofit organizations in our region enhance the lives of people with disabilities by equitably providing expertly-trained service dogs, ongoing services, and a committed community of support. And whereas National Service Dog Month aims to educate our community about the benefit of service dogs and the laws protecting them. And whereas the City of Bellevue recognizes an inclusive community where all community members and their service dogs are embraced and welcomed. Now, therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim September 2023 as National Service Dog Month in Bellevue, and encourage community members to celebrate these task-trained, task-trained service animals, and respect the rights of adults and children who lead more independent lives because of their assistance. Thank you.
And Naomi, did you have anything you wanted to say? Naomi is from the Puget Sound Chapter of K-9 Companions for Independence.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much. I want to thank everybody on this council on behalf of the service dog organizations all over the country, and from K-9 Companions here today. We have some special guests in the audience, so I just want to say thank you on behalf of service dogs everywhere, and thank you for your continued support for our community. Thank you.
Let's do a picture with you first and everybody in the audience that you brought with you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next up, we have oral communications. City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. There are four pre-registered speakers this evening. And before I get started, excuse me, calling names, I need to remind the public of a few of the rules that the council has in place. So, the total time for oral communications is for a period not to exceed 30 minutes. Persons speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first, and if time remains, others will be called after that. The presiding officer is authorized in both of those categories to give preference to those who haven't spoken to the council within the last 60 days, or who are speaking to items that will come on the agenda within the next 60 days. Speakers will be allowed three minutes to speak, or up to three minutes, and a maximum of three speakers are allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. And I need to remind everyone that in compliance with Washington State campaign laws regarding the use of public facilities during elections, that no speaker may support or oppose a ballot measure or oppose a candidate for an election, which would include your own campaign. Any speaker who begins discussing topics of this nature will be asked to stop. With that, I'll call our first speaker, who is Craig Speel.
Good evening. My name is Craig Speel, a Bellevue resident. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of a coalition of Bellevue residents and businesses who are concerned regarding the direction council is taking pertaining to the TBD. I first want to also point out that my comments tonight were based on the ordinance, which was originally scheduled and still posted on the website for tonight's meeting. The public was not aware, provided notice that that has changed or the timeline has been updated, so these comments are still relevant. I first want to thank the Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers Lee and Zahn for attempting to put the brakes on this process. Thank you very much. And second, I also want to acknowledge the Mayor and Councilman Robertson for engagement with the public. While we agree, while we disagree in the need and the supporting data and urgency, they have been willing to have a dialogue, and that's very important, so thank you again. That said, the TBD is shaping up to be one of the most controversial issues the council has been faced with, and I believe will be a defining moment of the legacy of this council. There's been unanimous community opposition in the formation of the TBD, and it's important to recognize that the issue is not just about a tax. The bigger issue is the process and how it was fast-tracked without data, transparency, fiscal governance, and budget prioritization. This does not represent due diligence. I stand before you with a simple request. Before you force taxpayers to open our wallets, you, the city, needs to look at what money you already have in your wallet. You might be surprised what you find. So where do we go from here? Council can approve the ordinance, disregarding the public concerns voiced over the past two months. Number two, you could place a hiatus on the ordinance for six months or more, recognizing that 57% of the council seats are up for reelection in six weeks. Council should allow the incoming council to vote on this pivotal issue. Third, consider amendments into the ordinance which would establish guardrails to help address the community concerns. These recommended amendments include, one, or A, before any taxes are approved, council should direct the city manager to review all budget for opportunities to reallocate funds to support the transportation requirements. B, require voter approval for any tax or fee as provided by RCW 36.73. C, establish a sunset clause for any approved taxes of no more than two years and require voter approval for any such extension. And D, require the Transportation Department to identify and seek council's approval for any capital projects to be funded by the TBD. So in summary, I want to thank you for your time. It's important that we work together to keep the TBD from fracturing the community and focus on the trust that the city has built with the community over the past 70 years. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Don Marsh.
Good evening. My name is Don Marsh. You might remember me as the co-founder and president of the Coalition of Eastside Neighborhoods for Sensible Energy. I now serve as the co-founder and vice president of 300 Trees and as a board member for Trees for Liveability. But tonight, I'm speaking as a member of Sierra Club's Washington State Energy Committee, representing thousands of Sierra Club members who are also customers of PSE. I'm here to voice our concerns about a very questionable energy project that will impact Bellevue and more than a million PSE customers who will pay higher electricity bills for decades to pay for the project. As you may know, PSE is pursuing a land-use permit to build the north segment of its energized east side transmission line. In its land-use application, PSE cites an environmental impact study that is eight years old and woefully out of date. The EIS evaluated conditions for an east side grid with much less emergency capacity than we have today. It generally dismissed technology alternatives that have become much less expensive and more capable during the past decade. It assumed state and federal government policies that have now been changed to address the threat of climate change. Sierra Club believes the north segment is an obsolete proposal that does not increase reliability, capacity, or access to clean energy, and the cost of the project is high. In addition to raising our electric bills, PSE proposes to cut down hundreds of valuable urban trees in central Bellevue that already suffers from summer temperatures 10 degrees hotter than neighborhoods with more tree canopy. They affected neighborhoods housed some of our city's least affluent and most diverse residents. Before the city approves a huge infrastructure project that would increase risks for our residents, increase our energy bills, destroy natural resources, and inflict months of intrusive and inconvenient construction on everyone, let's make sure this project actually improves reliability to customers, as mandated by Bellevue's land use code. We ask the city council to join us in asking for a supplemental EIS to specifically address our questions and ensure our sacrifices are actually benefiting the city. Let's demonstrate our shared commitment to protecting the well-being of our trees, our wildlife, our residents, and future generations. Thank you very much.
My name is Bill Hurd, and I've lived at 2615 170th Avenue Southeast since 1967. More than a decade ago, I made several presentations to the council, attempting to persuade them not to allow the 10 permits sound transit needed for EastLink. The council chose to ignore me, and I am here tonight because one of the results of that decision, the EastLink starter line debuted next month, next March, excuse me. Sound Transit intends to operate two-car trains between FTC and South Bellevue TC every 10 minutes, every 10 minutes for 16 hours a day. I'm here tonight to prevent starter line operation from being an environmental nightmare for those living along the route, exceeding the noise levels of Bellevue Municipal Code. It limits those levels to 55 dB in residential areas and 60 dB in commercial. Those limits resulted in Sound Transit spending millions to shield homes along the route into Bellevue. However, they have made no attempts to shield those along the route between RTC and Bellevue, instead approving a memorandum that limits their need to mitigate the noise to whatever their CEO thinks is reasonable. All right? I'm here tonight to publicly tell you that the only way that the starter line would not create, would not exceed the noise code is to dramatically slow the trains, that the council should insist. Sound Transit's reasonable and feasible noise mitigation includes limiting speeds to as low as 15 to 20 miles an hour. That's the only way they can ever achieve that noise goal. Thank you.
Thank you. The final list, or the final speaker on our list is Alex Zimmerman.
I'm sorry. It's a problem for me. Sit down. I'm so sorry. The high, a damn Nazi Gestapo fascist, a bandita, a mafia and bandita who support Iranian Muslim and Russian terrorists. So, what is, my name, Alex Zimmerman, and I live in Bellevue more than 35 years. I want to speak about something what is for me look absolutely sick, you know what it mean? Is Iranian Muslim, is Iranian Muslim president humiliate America, harassment America and American people, you know what it's mean? When Republic, Democrat talk about give them $6 billion, pardon, but he sends his president button, Democrat, you know what it's mean, far away. I never like see this before, you know what it's mean? And after this, we give $6 billion, for who? And what is they use this $6 billion for make atomic bomb? They have right now three ready atomic bomb, what is will destroy Israel, 8 million Jew in New York, you know what it's mean, 12 million people. This is exactly what's happened. So my question right now, very simple, why Democrat acting like an enemy of America and American people, you know what it's mean, support us enemy who can destroy America, who can destroy all world, you know what it's mean? Is this make me totally sick, you know what it's mean? This article, what is Seattle Times, what is Seattle Times printing 30th of August, support Iranian Muslim. I try understand why is going on, you know what it's mean? Why people in Seattle and King Country, you know what it's mean, in Bellevue, support Democrat? Are they all sick, are mentally sick, you know what it's mean? Don't understand, so Democrat is a mafia organized criminal who hate America and American people? Why this happen, you know what it's mean? It's confuse me totally. I live here 35 years, and I don't understand how this possible. 35 percentage vote for Democrat, the same percentage, what is vote for Ardo Gilter Nazi, you know what it's mean, and Nazi 39, and Nazi destroy country totally. And Democrat, right now, we can see this, it's very simple, destroy everything, you know what it's mean, what is America have? It's a nightmare, and exactly for 30 percentage people who totally poor right now, guy before, I support him by 100 percentage. Yes, you need post a bill, look how much money we have in our pocket, and after this makes this decision. So I speak right now to everybody, stand up, America, stand up Bellevue, stand up King Country, destroy this Democrat mafia, this bandita, you know what it's mean, and cleanse this chamber totally, because they control our state for more than 30 years, it's a pure Putin fascism. Thank you very much for your time.
That's the end of our pre-registered list of speakers this evening. I'd ask at this point if there's anyone else joining us in council chambers who would like to speak. Please raise your hand. That goes for those online joining us as well. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. No additional hands, Mayor. I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. City Manager, you have something wonderful.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council members. I have one item under the city manager's report tonight, which is really a good news story, and that is a recognition of one of our police officers, Officer Akahani, by the Carnegie Hero Fund Commission. Just by way of background, the Carnegie Hero Fund Commission was created to recognize outstanding acts of selfless heroism performed in the United States and Canada. The commission awards the Carnegie Mellon to those who risk their lives to an extraordinary degree while saving or attempting to save the lives of others. The single event that drove Mr. Carnegie to organize this fund was the Harwick Mine disaster near Pittsburgh in January of 1904, which claimed 181 lives. The victims included an engineer and a miner who went into the stricken mine in a valiant attempt to rescue others. The tragedy and sacrifices moved Mr. Carnegie so much that he promptly took action on this then-novel idea of honoring and helping heroes of civilization. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Chief Wendell Shirley to talk about some of the details Officer Akahani accomplished recently. So, chief.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. We're very happy to be here to honor Officer Akahani, who is right here to my right. On June 6, 2022, Officer Akahani saved a 17-year-old boy from drowning after a young man wearing a backpack filled with 50 pounds of weights entered Phantom Lake. Officer Akahani and his partners were dispatched to the scene, where after searching, they saw the boy's hand under the surface of the water at the end of the pier. In full uniform, which included his boots and ballistic vest, Officer Akahani climbed over the wooden rails and jumped into the 50-degree water, where he submerged three times before finding the young man in the murky water. He pulled him to the surface and brought him to the pier. Officer Akahani pushed the boy, who was by then unconscious, upward, and officers on the pier pulled him from the water, where they performed CPR. The great news is the young man was taken to the hospital by ambulance, and he survived. Bellevue firefighters assisted Officer Akahani from the water. He was cold and nearly exhausted. So, we're here tonight to honor Officer Akahani for his courageous service. Thank you, Mayor.
Officer Akahani, I know that you and your colleagues wake up every morning and go to work, willing to risk your lives for the people that you serve, and this is an incredible example of just that, and I want you to know how proud we are as a council to have you and your colleagues in the City of Bellevue working for us, and just to have your spirit and your courage and your compassion. We're very honored. Before I present the award, I'd like to invite, I know you have some special friends here with you, the Hawkins, come all the way from Hawaii. If we'd like to all gather here, I will present this award to you. Next up, we have the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have two study session.
Hello there. How can I help?
Let's see. What do we need help on?
We have two study session items, and Mr. Miyaki, would you like to introduce them?
Thank you, Mayor. The first one is an information update on the Bellevue Downtown Association's partnership with the city's cultural and economic development staff, which they do to support the public space management and activation in the downtown. The Bellevue Downtown Association will provide a report on the 2223 public space management projects, as well as an overview of how this work aligns with its strategic plan. Joining us this evening are Anthony Gill, who is the interim Grant Connection Program Manager with the Community Development Department. To his To his right, as you know, is Patrick Bannon, President of the Bellevue Downtown Association. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you, Anthony, to kick it off.
Perfect. Thank you so much, City Manager Miyaki. So thank you so much for having us, Mayor Robinson, and members of the council. As City Manager Miyaki mentioned, tonight's presentation is an informational update from one of the city's cultural and economic development team's key partners, the Bellevue Downtown Association. Over the past four years, CED has helped fund certain place management activities conducted by the BDA in order to encourage people to stay downtown longer and come back more often. This work aligns with our goal to support small business and retailers, speed our recovery from the pandemic, and create new amenities as more people live and work downtown. This work on management and operations of public space is also essential to the Grand Connection vision, to connect people and places from Maidenbauer Bay Park through downtown and across I-405 to East Rail. So Patrick Bannon, BDA's president, will be sharing an update on our ongoing place management and activation partnership, as well as their recently adopted strategic plan. I'm also here to answer any questions that you may have. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Patrick.
Thank you, Anthony. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, members of the council. Thank you for giving me this opportunity, and it is a privilege to be here tonight to talk about downtown, and even more importantly, the people and the partnerships that make this downtown what it is today. The first slide really is all about an invitation, less a declaration, more an invitation, to go boldly forward. And what I'd like to highlight tonight principally is that it is the spirit of partnership that allows us to go boldly forward. The work that has come before us, the decisions this council and prior councils have made, that leaders and residents throughout Bellevue have made over the last, you know, seven decades. So ultimately, there's a truth that I'd like to start out with, and that is that downtowns are intrinsically human places, and that we are in it together. It's public and private and partnership every day, and everything in between. And because people care so much about what happens in their city and downtown, both today and tomorrow, downtown should represent an array of opportunities, and we welcome the opportunities it brings. For nearly 50 years, almost 50, next February will be the BDA's 50th anniversary, this organization, a nonprofit membership organization, has been able to agree on at least one thing, and that is our mission and vision, which have both stayed amazingly consistent over time. And in our vision and our work together, it's less about a vision for the BDA as an organization, it is much more about a vision for downtown Bellevue. The downtown Bellevue is a vital, livable, accessible, and welcoming community. It is a creative center for global talent and innovative businesses. It is a thriving retail, dining, and entertainment destination, and it is a growing, diverse residential neighborhood and a supportive partner to surrounding neighborhoods and cities. It was the early 70s that the city's first planning director, Fred Herman, working with private sector leaders, decided to answer some questions, some questions about the direction of downtown. It wasn't so much revitalization need, it was more about a redevelopment opportunity, answering the question about what type of community, what type of downtown should Bellevue have. And that story keeps getting written every day. In our work, over the last five years, we've seen significant change. Change has been a constant, and this snapshot gives us one look at the changes we've seen. Over the last 12 months, we've been, we're able to, through a platform called Place for AI, track anonymized cellphone data, and this anonymized cellphone data is served up in a number of reports. So over the last 12 months, downtown itself, and when you think of downtown, we're using the traditional boundaries of what we know to be downtown, west of 405 and east of 100th, and we've seen about 30, there are almost 34 million visits over the last 12 months. That is up over calendar year 2022 by about 9%, significantly up over 21 and 20, and still, by comparison, down from 2019. What these numbers show me is that downtown Bellevue overall has made a remarkably strong rebound from the pandemic, from a time of significant change, and that we continue to be, we see the trends move upward. We're still recovering, there are spaces to fill, we've had major tenant moves, and the landscape continues to evolve. Downtown Bellevue, like the rest of the East Side, experiences high cost to access, high cost to lease space, high cost to do business, high cost to rent space in downtown Bellevue and throughout the community. At the same time, given the recent development wave, we have seen more people-centered places and experiences come online. We've celebrated the opening of new buildings, we've seen our downtown parks receive significant investments, and the continued decision-making and investments from this community is paying off dividends and helping people come back together and enjoy downtown Bellevue. We remain intensely focused on fundamentals. It's hard to whittle down a list of fundamentals to seven, but here are seven fundamentals that we track, we keep a close eye on, and ultimately informs the city partnership work that we move forward together. A downtown should have strong impact as an economic and cultural center for the city. It should be, it should have creative density as a hub for talent, arts, and culture. We have a rich legacy in our community of being a thriving retail center. That retail has been a catalyst for residential growth, for office growth, for being an employment center for the entire region. We continue to see growth in the dining and hospitality sectors. Connectivity is of huge value to the community. Downtown Bellevue has made significant strides through its access to transit, more walkable streets and sidewalks, through vision and planning with the Grand Connection project, and through making strategic key roadway capacity investments, especially over the last two decades. People value their social spaces, the plazas, parks, and public places we all love, and hopefully love, and want to continue to improve. Downtown Bellevue is an 18-hour community, increasingly so. We pay close attention to its social fabric and diversity. We are a growing and diversifying community, and our public places and our spaces are where we want to celebrate that and continue to make the invitation to all. And then innovation and quality. Customer care, attention to detail, we see that take place in private spaces, at Bellevue Square, in the downtown park, in Old Bellevue, in office buildings, at City Hall. We want to continue to monitor and extend that level of care and attention to detail to our public spaces. If there is an eighth one, it might be, don't screw it up, right? We have a fairly good thing going, but that seemed a little crude, and seven are enough Highlighting the partnership programs and activities, especially over the last two years, that we have invested in together with the city. These should be familiar to you. We've celebrated them, we've noted them in the past, we've learned a lot from these experiences. Over the last two years, we've invested in and staffed downtown experience ambassadors that particularly over the summer have evaluated our public spaces, they've supported our community events, they've noted key trends, kept count of litter, kept count of other nuisances that we can take care of. They were early on counting shopping carts, so much so that they were tired of counting shopping carts, and we were able to keep that conversation going, and thanks to the city's investment, have made some progress on that. Right before the pandemic, we invested in movable bistro furniture. It may seem like a small thing, but the act of putting out 24 tables, three chairs at each table, that are colorful and movable in public spaces in downtown along the Grand Connection route, are an invitation for people to gather, they're the invitation for people to enjoy one another's company, and ultimately be in the space with one another. We've found that this to be a tremendous success, to have this furniture available for use. We've lost one chair in the last four years. Everything has been, right?
It looks great in my patio.
Right, well, thank you. If you look underneath, Mayor Robinson, it says Property of Bellevue Downtown Association. You can bring it back. So knock on wood, we'll continue to have a good track record with the movable outdoor furniture. Again, a small thing, but something simple that can activate our spaces. We continue to work on opportunities to highlight the parking we have available in downtown. We do have an abundance of parking. It has been a competitive advantage to have available parking, and as we welcome more people to downtown and increasingly try to build business and build foot traffic in areas that traditionally haven't had parking, people are unsure where to go. People are unsure of what garages to use, what is paid, what is unpaid, so we're working collaboratively with the city to highlight public parking opportunities. And then connected primarily to the Grand Connection, we have implemented a pilot for wayfinding and interim signage to let people know where they are. Now, this is just a pilot, and there's a significant opportunity moving forward for us to expand wayfinding and giving people the tools they need to navigate around downtown, especially on foot. Over the last three years, we've worked collaboratively on the alfresco outdoor dining in Old Bellevue. We've expanded our Bellevue Beats and Bytes music series to different parts of the day, incorporating a pop-up market last year, this year incorporating a wine and beer garden that is open to all, and doing other activations within our music presentation to, again, extend the invitation to welcome workers who are returning to the office, residents who are growing in number in downtown Bellevue, and really celebrate what we have talent-wise in our region, and to make each corner and sidewalk come alive as best as we can. We've launched online resources through this collaboration for the workforce that's returning, including a restaurant guide, again, more parking information, shopping guide, and the dining guide in particular has been of significant help. It takes staffing and a lot of work to keep this updated, and it's something we take seriously. And so if you see an update that's needed, feel free to reach out to me anytime. We're always trying to stay on our toes and keep our information updated. Right as the pandemic was happening, we quickly worked with the city team to decide, where can we have the most impact? There are resources coming together through pandemic relief funds, there are activities to directly help businesses to distribute PPE. One of the areas that we felt there was a gap and eventually a need was to help tell the story of our business community. Small businesses and organizations throughout downtown Bellevue that have a story to tell, not just BDA members, but businesses of all kinds, those who are coming up with creative and innovative ways to make, keep their people on staff, they're bringing new products to our marketplace, and the Heart of Bellevue campaign is something that we continue to sustain and put a significant amount of time into. Joined tonight by my colleague Sandy Voe, she's in the back there, I don't know if Sandy, you can raise your hand, but she has single-handedly, working with our team, but been a primary author of stories about the people behind the place in downtown. And people have been willing to share their stories, and again, highlight not just the buildings and spaces we have, but really the energy, innovation, and creative talent that this community has, and we're building on a legacy of that every day. So with Heart of Bellevue campaign, there have been more than 80 person behind a place features, hundreds of, well, 131 weekly newsletters, and social media has gone through the roof for us comparatively back, comparative before we had our Heart of Bellevue campaign. More than a million in audience across all social media. So it's, again, work that takes time, effort, energy, and commitment, and this partnership has made it happen. Work cited about the future, and planning is a necessary tool, and we decided as an organization that we needed to update our strategic plan just recently. I don't know if I recommend doing a strategic planning process during a pandemic. We were kind of on our way out of it, it was a unique time to do it, but we felt it was ultimately necessary to reshape and define our trajectory moving forward as an organization. And what we found is that our city partnership work was already lining up well with the focus of our strategic plan and the input the community voices were providing, not just the BDA Board of Directors or our membership, but our consulting partner MIG asked for input across stakeholders in Bellevue. And what we heard, we try, again, tried to summarize in the top four themes, is that people are concerned, excited, anxious about growth, they're highly interested in the quality of the downtown experience, the connections we make, especially of a multimodal nature, improving walkability, and ensuring people can get here from throughout the region, and then building community and celebrating the diverse social fabric and tapestry that is Bellevue. So as you'll, if you've had an opportunity to just breeze through the strategic plan, you'll, again, see these themes emerge as a focus on major connectivity projects, including the Grand Connection and the vision that is laid out for connecting across 405 to East Rail and through downtown. People are highly interested in active, in more activated, safe, and attractive community spaces. Private building owners and in places like parks that are well-tended, those are pretty well taken care of. It's the spaces in between that do continue to matter. It's spaces where we want to answer the question, does someone care? Are they tending to its safety, its attractiveness? Are there things we can do to activate it with art, with music, with engagement opportunities? Doing work to activate spaces throughout downtown, the 410 acres that we have in downtown Bellevue, will take time, it will take energy, and it will take resources, resources that today go beyond what the BDA's budget would allow. We have membership dues, of course, like any organization like ours, we have sponsorships and event revenue, and we have some city contract partnership work that helps extend transportation demand management, as well as the city partnership work. But in order to do more public realm management and activation work, in order to deliver more of what we feel the community wants in the way of community celebrations, live music, public art, experiences that really represent our community, we're going to need more resources to get that done. And we've seen through our strategic planning process, property owners want to be supportive in that, in that work. I feel the city wants to be supportive in that work, and we certainly heard it from our residents at our recent mingle, that they'd like to see more and be supportive in that work. Getting it done is the hard part, and so identifying additional resources is a part of my challenge and the BDA's challenge over the next year and a half. And then as our community continues to grow and diversify, rethinking event opportunities is a big opportunity for our community. Much more to say about that. We've done major community events over the last 20, 25 years, and we've done them well, but as we continue to grow and diversify, we want downtown to be a stage for even more. Summarizing the objectives in our strategic plan, we have six core goals, and then if you look at the planning document, there are implementation steps outlined for each of the core goals. Reflecting the themes from our feedback, create safe and attractive spaces, celebrate community, really extend the invitation for people to celebrate in downtown in a number of ways. Continue to champion mobility. The city and community has made great strides in improving our multimodal network. People still want to have options when they come downtown, whether they're coming by car, by bike, by transit, by scooter, you name the mode. Engaging with data-driven advocacy for organizations like ours, and in order to represent downtown and the brand that we have, in order to maintain a competitive advantage, we want to bring data-driven advocacy along with the city to represent our needs with locally, regionally, and at other levels of work, including federal government. We need to continue to support retail and their storefront economy, telling their stories, understanding their needs. We will continue to see transition in the way of redevelopment and some displacement. We want businesses to have a place to go in downtown or within Bellevue. Our brokers on the retail side and the commercial leasing side have their work cut out for them. They are outstanding at what they do, yet there are still some opportunities and challenges, especially with the code, that we can look at to continue to make improvements so that businesses, small, midsize, even large businesses can stay here in downtown Bellevue. And then number six is enhance the BDA's capabilities. This comes back to resources, our team, our ability to scale with downtown's growth and meet rising expectations. We haven't had anyone come to us in the strategic planning process and say, you know, dial it back, do less. If anything, the invitation has been to do more, and then to set realistic expectations about what we can do with what we have. And it's our responsibility to continue to And it's our responsibility to continue to inform that work with community insights, continue to ask what people value, and ultimately, if we're going to do more, we need to be very specific about the use of resources ahead of time and not guess at it later. Wrapping up, we are facing a bright future, and just like when you're staring at any kind of bright light, you might put on your shades or lower the visor, or it might be at night and it's lighting a path, there are a certain set of challenges before you can move boldly forward to face a bright future. And these challenges are informed by study tours we've taken to other communities, conversations and lessons learned from other downtown organizations, and of course, coming to city council meetings over the last 18 years, I've learned a lot about challenges and what it takes to move forward in a, in a spirit of partnership. Complacency and lack of attention, we know especially in the downtown that problems can cost more to solve later. Understanding who's in charge and not so much of there's an authority in place, but it's more or less the responsibilities, just like in a workplace, we need to understand the responsibilities of various organizations and who's going to take care of the key needs we're facing. And then like any issue, entrenched sides can stay entrenched and nothing happens. Finding common ground can become difficult. We can pull out examples from other communities in the past and currently where entrenched sides have led to complacency, a lack of clarity around responsibilities, and ultimately a strong need to recover as opposed to move forward. Moving boldly forward and extending that invitation through our, to our membership and through the community and to the city will take active collaboration, sharing of responsibilities, actionable steps for new initiatives. The details will matter significantly. And then ultimately, we're on, it's a long game, the work of downtown, the work that, the investment that the city makes in a downtown, the rallying of stakeholders that a private organization puts forward is to hopefully set up enduring stewardship for a thriving downtown experience. Leaving you with a quote from an urbanist socialist, a socialist, I'm sorry, a social observer and consultant from the past, he died in 1999, William Holly White. And he was one of the lead thinkers that led to Project of Public Spaces. He was an innovator in thinking about how people come together in social spaces, wrote several books, and he visited downtown Bellevue in 1980 at the invitation of the Bellevue Downtown Association. And Holly White had a quote that has stuck, not just for Bellevue, but for other communities, and the thing that attracts other people is people. And then ultimately, we want to extend, extend an invitation to other people, a lot more people to enjoy downtown. Bellevue welcomes the world, and the world is coming. And the people who are coming are going to bring cars and noise and all of the idiosyncrasies that we all share as part of humanity, but they're also going to bring their wisdom, their talent, their creativity and their energy, and we want all of that downtown. Interesting quote from Holly White when he visited in 1980 from a Seattle Post Intelligencer story. White said that downtown Bellevue needs streets and sidewalks and ground-level retailers with streetfront windows to bring people back to the street. Although there are others that are, that look at it and try to do that, they haven't been trying to coalesce into a dynamic city. In regard to Bellevue, White said, he never saw such an unusual city. Nancy Rising, Executive Director of the Bellevue Downtown Association, again, this is back in 1980, said that after meeting, after the meeting, that the current work on a new zoning code to an effort, is an effort to change a car-oriented suburb created in 1953 into a people-oriented city in the 90s. The work continues. Thank you again for your collaboration, your ongoing invitation to make downtown a thriving place, and look forward to much more work together.
Thank you. That was a wonderful presentation. I'm going to start with Councilmember Lee, comments or questions?
Thank you. I want to make a few comments and maybe just one question. Thank you very much, Patrick, for the wonderful presentation. You really articulated the history all the way through and the progress and the challenges and the future promises that we're looking at. I just want to make a couple of quick introductions first. I always say that downtown Bellevue is the goose that lays the golden egg. So you can tell how much emphasis, you know, I place, and I think most people, on downtown Bellevue. The challenge and the growth is in the old days, you know, when I first got in the council, we mostly are still office daytime, you know, eight hours, and it's deserted when people go home. So it's now, you know, because of the zoning, because encouragement, and because of, you know, obviously downtown association, businesses, government, all working together, it's now probably the largest neighborhood in the city. I think it's well over 10,000 people living here now. It's growing, right? I'm not sure exactly what it is, but it's going for sure. I think the target's like, what, 15,000, 13,000?
We have 15,000 currently, and that's a 400% growth over the last 20 years.
Yes, amazing. I remember the first resident, residential places, apartment located, built by Michael Crist, and it's been a while before everything started going, and it's just amazing. So I want to compliment on the partnership, because like you said, it's people that makes things happen. And I want to say that, you know, when we look at your, your goal, you know, I want to comment on that. I agree with almost 100% all the goals, six goals you mentioned, core goals. But the two I mainly want to really emphasize is, which I agree 100%, let me look at this, create safe and attractive spaces, safety, because when people live there, when people, especially living there, they work there, obviously, they want to be safe. And we see our neighbors, you know, their problems because it's not safe. So when people live there 24 hours a day, and the children, the family, it's got to be safe. And the other one is champion mobility. It's very important, you know, downtown, we have a lot more people from zero population to 15,000, that's a lot of folks. You have to get them in and out. You mentioned Fred Herman, you know, his vision, we're still actually completing it. One of the things you talk about is accessibility, how to get in and out of downtown. You talk about underground traffic, transportation, we have now, we have light rail coming underground. So there's other things we can do. And all the pedestrian corridor you talk about, it's all important. It's all part of the mobility, right, improvement that we can make people, if people get stuck in somewhere, they're going to come, they're going to go, right?
Councilmember Lee.
So, so I'm done.
Okay. Can we just tighten it up a little?
Okay, so I'm glad you are developing the strategy plan, very much so. But one thing you mentioned, however, is partnerships, you have to, we have to coordinate and be consistent and compatible with the city's goal and vision. So I think it's important, which I think you have done very well, but I would encourage because there's so many changes happening, so many more challenges happening, so many things, we have diversity, lots of people with different ideas, different visions, and different cultures. So I think it's important that we have to work closer against people. So my, my question then is, given the changing nature of work, you know, the, because of the pandemic, the work, new norm, you know, we have offices empty now, you know, and they have to figure out how to occupy the space. And then we also have, obviously, the economy, you know, it's going to be stagnant for a while, don't know how it's going to recover. So how do you, as a BDA, what would you think, what's your plan of pivoting on working toward those, hopefully temporary problems and make it work and for the city in the very near future?
Key, key point you just said is hopefully temporary, but it may be a longer-term issue that we face with vacant space or how best to utilize space. The fundamentals in downtown Bellevue are exceedingly strong, and that works in our favor to fill space. Fortunately, the blocks of office space that we'll see come available or that have come available are in Class A buildings, Class A plus buildings, however you want to classify them. And that's going to create opportunities for new businesses, businesses that may have wanted to be in our market to check out Bellevue. And I know our brokerage community is working hard on, on those future tenants. We also can do an even stronger job in telling the story of Bellevue, representing it not just regionally, but looking at opportunities across, across the country and even globally. And that means continued partnership with Visit Bellevue, with our Chamber of Commerce, with other organizations, cultural and community development related, to say, what are your fundamentals and how do we best express those to future tenants? Paying attention to the details in those in-between spaces are going to make a difference, and our transportation network is going to be an advantage too.
Thank you. Councilmember Braxdale.
All right, thank you. Patrick, good to see you. Thanks for the, the presentation. So first going to react to the last comment you made around trying to make, working to make it easier for mom and pop shops. I'm going to translate a little bit. For mom and pop shop, entrepreneurs to move into or enter into the market in Bellevue, so I'm really excited to hear about that work and look forward to it. In your plan, you had creating a DEI framework, which I'm excited about, and I think it, I'm curious how that, how you see that integrating in, given the plan is created, you know, for 2023 and beyond, how are you seeing, seeing that work tie into the strategic plan as you're carrying it out, right? I mean, we're continually, continuing to diversify and so forth, wanting to see the increased representation, right? And so just curious about how you're going to do that. And then I'm going to put a plug in for more night activities, just in general.
Positive night activities.
Positive?
Is that what you meant? Just more night events?
More night events, yeah, yeah. And then on the wayfinding, are you looking at, and I hear, I hear you on capacity, are you looking at a digital wayfinding approach? I think there could be some opportunities there to provide suggested routes through the downtown area for folks who are maybe starting at one point and then, you know, looking for that, what's in, what's around them, but then suggesting trails throughout downtown based on maybe the kind of experience they're looking to have in the city.
Yeah, thank you. On DEI framework, that touches a topic that when I look back, there, there is some, if we could go back and play it again, we'd do things differently on our strategic plan. And it wasn't a fault of the strategic plan in, you know, in principle, but really, we should have developed our DEI framework as we were doing our strategic planning process. I would have liked to have done that work concurrently or right before then. However, it is a very much a work in progress currently as we evaluate our event portfolio or our board representation, invitations we make to the community. When we talk about place making, which can mean different things to different people, it really should be informed by the users of the place and the organizations and the, and the residents that are, are populating that space. We have a lot of work to do in order to understand how best to make the invitation and then convene in a way that is meaningful and, and provides value.
Thank you, and glad to hear it. I mean, I think it's important that you're prioritizing it, so I hear you on the, on the past, not being able to incorporate, but I appreciate the work that you're doing to incorporate it now. QR code, digital wayfinding, any thoughts about where that's at?
There are several tools and potential options that we can explore with digital wayfinding, and from very simple things like the QR code you'll see on the temporary wayfinding for the Grand Connection to installed wayfinding appliances that are interactive and digital. Those are high cost and take a significant investment, but it's worth exploring.
Awesome. Thank you, and thanks for the work that you all did for downtown.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Patrick, for the great presentation, great update, and thank you for the socialist quotes. I appreciate that.
Always.
As well to hear that. You, I'm just going to jump around a little bit. You made a lot of, of great points, like, you know, on the, on the, on the parking, it feels as if when there is, when there's concern or confusion on parking, just giving you some unsolicited feedback that I always hear all the time, thank you, is not necessarily, they know where to park when they're going to Bell Square or Lincoln Tower South, et cetera. When I hear the confusion or they're unsure about where to park is when they really want to go to Main Street and they're not sure where to go then. So I, I'm sure that's a priority for you, but that's, that's where I hear the, because other than that, I never really hear that often about, you know, parking issues. And you're right, it is a competitive advantage that we currently have, except for that one part of downtown, I feel, when people desperately want to visit one of our wonderful mom and pop shops there, or restaurants, or bars, or, or what have you. So would, would love to hear what you're, what you're doing there as I continue down, and then you can, you can answer them. Love the fact that you're rethinking the event opportunities for the city, both in terms of the diversity of events as well as the scale of the events. You know, I think we've proved that we can put on some world-class events in the city, and I'm glad that we're rethinking that. So thank you for including that in that strategic plan. Safety, like Councilmember Lee just mentioned, if we don't have safety, I think everything else falls apart very, very quickly. So I appreciate the fact that you have really emphasized that and the importance of that, as well as balancing that, I think, you know, in order to put on an event safely, you know, that takes resources and, and, and there are times when maybe we should step away, but identifying the ones that we can do, do it right and do it safely, those are the ones that we should, we should target. So I appreciate, again, your, your emphasis on that. Question on two items that you had in here, one was under the unclear responsibilities. I'm just clear, kind of curious about that and the challenges, I would like to learn a little bit more about that, where that uncertainty lies in terms of who's responsible for what or what you're seeing right now, and also what maybe we as a city could help clarify what the responsibilities are. Or maybe that's on a case-by-case basis, but would love to get your insight on that. And then also, you mentioned about keeping downtown competitive. That might have been a catch-all for everything, but I'd love to get a little more insight from you on that. I mean, does that mean the, the quality and breadth of shopping and dining and events, et cetera, or does it go beyond that in terms of us being competitive? Those are the, the two questions that would love to get a little further insight on. But thank you so much for a great presentation, great, a great update, and to all the great work that the BDA is doing year-round, and I really appreciate all the wonderful partnerships that you have, not only with the city, but with all the major employers as well, doing sterling work. So thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'll start with parking. I think you raised that just briefly. This is an ongoing project, it's part of the collaboration, where it's basic inventory of available spaces, paid or unpaid, geographically where are they located? Is it available during the day, in the night? And then finding the best way or tool to package the information and then market what's available, and then monitor its use to, not that we're out there monitoring parking utilization, but monitor the effectiveness of it. We have available parking, and it's consolidated and marketed through apps and third-party platforms, but we think there's an opportunity, based on what we've learned in other communities, to do a better job consolidating and marketing the, the parking that is available. On the shared responsibilities, exactly, and I say exactly because the experience of the Grand Connection and understanding the legacy of decisions that were made through private, with private development as part of permitting, public agencies, the transit center, light poles, you name it, there is, there are a number of elements in the public realm that even in deeper conversations about who's responsible for what leads to, I'm not quite sure, let's get, we'll come back to that.
Patchwork.
Right, it is a patchwork. And so this is happening in large part thanks to the leadership and initiative of the city staff team, working with the BDA to use the Grand Connection as a great example of who's responsible for what, and it goes deep. So that's important work, that was one of the primary elements there. And even on bigger topics like keep, keep downtown competitive, of course, we all want to keep downtown competitive, but what does that mean? I think it is understanding what our vision is, is our vision shared, and are we clear in what we want to try to accomplish as a community, and then continually communicating and keeping the conversation moving forward, paying attention to the details, not becoming complacent and saying, are we where we want to be, or are there some other problems we want to solve together? So when I, when I think of keep downtown competitive, there are various metrics we can look at, but it really is that ongoing collaboration and communication, where we're answering the question, are we competitive and are we fulfilling our vision?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I love this presentation and the partnership. What you said about spirit of partnership to go boldly forward, absolutely. The fact that this is about being human-centered places and also celebrating community, because I was reminded when we talked about 15,000 in downtown that this is literally the living room of folks living in downtown. And so just being cognizant of that, I love the fact that you leaned in and pivoted to the Pride Dog Walk, right, as part of downtown. And so that will keep moving and be even a larger event, which I think the community really has embraced and look forward to. I would say that I would like to see even more activating spaces and pop-ups and human-centered spaces. I don't know, portable pianos with games in addition to music. And so I know that coming into the winter, it may be a little more challenging to think of what types of events we could still have potentially outside. And then when you talked about the partnerships, I was actually thinking about bellhop and how that potentially helps activate the mobility and getting people around. And I would say, safety to me in downtown is also about making sure that people can walk around safely, because there are sometimes still cars that drive pretty fast in downtown. And I do worry about the safety of pedestrians walking around. So as we look at that, we haven't quite mentioned curb management plan, but I think when we talk about parking and mobility, how we best look at some of the tools that is in the curb management to be in partnership with BDA. I really like the idea of the wayfinding and the parking and leveraging smart data so that people can make the decision about where to park, hopefully before they even get there, so they're not looping around a bunch of times looking for parking and creating both congestion as well as frustration in trying to find a place to park. I had heard that we had mapped the inventory of parking and there's actually a lot of parking in downtown, but it may be not as well-understood about parking that's inside buildings and what's accessible. So I appreciate you taking a look and doing that work. The question about the small businesses and the commercial rents, and I appreciate the fact that, thank you, Sandy, for telling their stories. I would like to figure out how in partnership we can do more with the displacements of these businesses? And is there more we can do with supporting tenant spaces that maybe is too big for a small business and the rents are pretty high? Are there some shared uses or some currently vacant spaces that could potentially be a temporary pop-up? And what could be done in partnership to make that work more? And you mentioned in there about more revenue and funding. So I guess I'm kind of curious about what that might look like? And is some of that potentially business partners? We now have TPA with some funds for Visit Bellevue. Is that potentially a funding source as well for some shared common or shared projects or programs that you're thinking about? Related to DEI, I'm also very interested in that. I'm wondering if there's more that we could do with an organization like Intentionalist, who has, you know, leaned in in other cities, some of the smaller BIPOC retail and restaurants? And they've actually worked with the different sports teams to promote and activate. I haven't seen that necessarily in Bellevue, so I'm curious to see if we could do something there. And then lastly, related to the shared responsibility, I guess my thinking there is, you know, I always lean into responsibility being to the folks that are the most knowledgeable or the best to manage whatever that particular item is. So as we look at that shared responsibility and clarity, hopefully, we are really looking at how best to activate and leverage the best of all of the partners that we can bring. All in all, though, super excited about the continued partnership and even more of the type of things to come, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Zahn. Just briefly, you're right. It is apparent to me many, many times if we're getting into, what does it take to do strong retail recruitment and handle, work around the constraints we have, understand the needs of small businesses, what is viable for them? Expertise only goes so far here. And within even our 10-person team, we need to continue to look for resources, many of whom are in our community, outside resources if needed to really keep that conversation well-informed so that we're not guessing. We are applying data-driven approaches that are relevant to our community. On funding options, most downtown organizations, a strong percentage of North American downtown organizations have a component called a Business Improvement District or Business Improvement Area. The BDA has been around for almost 50 years, like I said. We have been, you know, vigorously membership-driven and making excellent use of the resources we've had available to us and looking creatively and entrepreneurially at ways to do that. Ultimately, based on feedback and interest from stakeholders throughout downtown, we feel the expectations will continue to rise for the downtown experience and that the interest level in specific activities and enhanced services will become necessary where city services and investments hit a certain level and that the expectations and interest in doing more, activating more, taking even better care of our public spaces becomes an interest and a focus for our business community, our property owners. But that is a, it's a challenging conversation because anytime we're talking about revenue, it's who pays how much? Is it fair? And what do we get for it? And so that value proposition conversation is one that we want to have over the next year, year and a half, so that we are informing that work with the stakeholders, potential rate pairs or public-private partners who are helping us get that work done so that they're feeling highly invested in the outcomes. And again, it's not a guess at what we hope might work. It's based on the data and the interests of those who would be paying into that partnership.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you. I, what's been said so far is really amazing. And I think, good questions and all, I just can't say anything too much about BDA. And it's just been a pleasure seeing it grow and how it develops. And it's clearly has made, is a big part of making Bellevue what it is and making Bellevue as vibrant as it is. You know, one of the things I like about it, too, is that BDA has a positive effect on not just downtown, but other parts of Bellevue. It's, you're not just downtown. And that's why, just call it BDA, it's kind of more inclusive. But it really, I think, has a great ripple effect for the rest of the city. And people from the community come, and neighborhoods like to come into downtown. Also, you're just been an amazing part of that. The other is, you know, obviously, working with the Chamber of Commerce. I don't, I haven't seen, I've lived in a lot of cities and been around. I haven't seen the collaboration as strong as this in many places. And it's increased so much under your leadership also. And I really appreciate that. You know, other things we have is a list. I have five things here. One is parks. We have parks, little parks, big parks, parks on the lake, all these different things. That is really makes down, and it's downtown. And people can come and have a big park downtown. And it's really great. The other is arts, which is increasing. And having arts in the parks, having arts other places, and the art events you have year-round just makes it a vibrant, vibrant city. Again, we would be lost without that. You'd have to create some whole new organization and it probably wouldn't be as good. And the other are the trails. Yes, the downtown, the Grand Connection is the big piece. And I'm really excited about getting that finally down over and connecting to the east side. And it's connecting downtown with the other parts, which will have great effect. And although it's kind of on the other side, East Trail is a big part of that, too, because it connects in there. And it lets people come, and when it's done right, which we're working on, we'll be able to have people coming there and over to downtown. So that's another part. And then is the, the community, the businesses. The smaller, larger businesses around all over town and it's growing, growing again. And that's something you've really, you set the stage for people to be able to have businesses. And you make it very viable and really exciting about that. It's another piece of it. And then the last thing is the, it's the downtown, it's the businesses, it's the commerce, and it's the growth of downtown itself from a small, I can't, you know, coming here in 1991 and you see maybe it's a two-story building around somewhere. All the things were small downtown. Bell Square was there, what, a couple, three stories maybe? And all of a sudden downtown, and going through the downtown livability piece, and you were very, very helpful in that. And that's interesting because you're, again, you're looking at how the growth should happen as well and you're contributing that with all this other background. And so what has happened is we have this, with the downtown livability and the things that are going on, it's a tremendous downtown. It's gotten Amazon, others to come here, smaller businesses. And it all ties together. And all of these other pieces fit into that. So you've done something, it's very, very difficult to have so many positive working-together pieces that make a whole. And I think that's, you've been a, the organization and the individuals working in it and working with the city. And the partnership with our staff, the partnership with the city, partnership with us is also just amazing. And I think that's why we're, why Bellevue is what it is. And you, I know you're very proud of it, but you should be.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes.
Thank you.
Okay, well, you've heard it all. And I'm just a big fan, as you know. Love what you've been doing and really looking forward to continuing our work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will take a quick break and come back at 20 till. All right, we're down to our second study session item. Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce it?
Sure, thank you, Mayor and Councilmember. The last study session topic this evening is a discussion on the Emergency Water Supply Master Plan. And just by way of background, this plan provides information on the vulnerability of the city's water system in the event of a major earthquake. It includes recommended policies as well as actions to mitigate the impacts to the city's water system if such an event were to occur. Following the presentation this evening, we, the staff will be seeking council consideration to finalize a resolution to adopt the plan as you see it tonight. Joining us at the table is Lucy Liu, Director, Linda DeBolt, Assistant Manager, Over Engineering. Eric LaFrance, Planning Manager, made to make sure you're there, Eric. All from the Utilities Department. We're also joined by Ken Wong, the Vice Chair of our Environmental Services Commission. With that, I'll hand it over to you, Lucy.
Thank you, Mr. Miyake. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor, Newland Housing Councilmembers. We are delighted to bring before you for consideration tonight a plan that will increase the resiliency of Bellevue's water supply by mitigating the risks associated with a major earthquake on our water system. Tonight, after the staff's presentation, Vice Chair Wong will provide the commission's recommendation on the plan. So tonight, we are seeking your direction on adoption of the Emergency Water Supply Master Plan. And if directed, we will bring the plan back at a future council member meeting for adoption. So utilities have been working on this important planning effort for the past five years. The plan proposes to take actions that will increase the resiliency of Bellevue's water system. The proposed investments make financial sense and will result in a water system that provides a level of service that is more closely aligned with what our customers' expectations are following a major disruption from an earthquake. Now, planning for infrastructure resiliency is not new for Bellevue Utilities. This is part of our ongoing capital infrastructure renewal or replacement planning that we do. This plan adds a seismic resilience lens to our long-term planning efforts. So why are we seeking your adoption of this plan? This plan will be a supplement to the city's water system plan. And so council adoption is required by city code. Additionally, adoption of a post-earthquake level of service goal is required by state law. This plan includes new policies to guide the prioritization in restoring water service should an emergency disrupt the delivery of water to our customers. This plan also guides future capital investments. And formal adoption of the plan will enhance the potential for Bellevue to secure grants for system resiliency efforts in the future. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Eric to highlight the proposed plan in more detail.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. Here's a look at our agenda tonight. We're going to start off by talking about why did we do this plan? We're going to cover some of the key elements of the plan. We'll go over some of the staff recommendations and the ESC recommendations. And then we'll be looking to you for some guidance on moving forward. So in 2016, when we completed our water system plan, we identified the need to increase the resiliency of our water supply. We looked at the hazards that our water supply faces and quickly identified an earthquake as the largest hazard. With our current infrastructure in the ground, if we were to experience a large earthquake, we would have two to three months of service disruption before we could restore water to all of our customers. This emergency plan seeks to increase the resiliency of our system. How would an earthquake affect our ability to deliver water to our customers? Well, there's two main ways. The first is the regional supply gets interrupted. Seattle Public, SPU or Cascade Water Alliance is unable to deliver water to us. So we had to look for ways, how could we source water locally? So we did an emergency well evaluation to see if we could drill wells and supply our own water. The second way our service could get interrupted is our local distribution mains, our system that we own and operate to get to the customers. To look at the vulnerabilities of that, we conducted a seismic vulnerability and assessment and resiliency plan. We then wrapped both of those studies into the Emergency Water Supply Master Plan. That master plan was then, the development and the completion of that plan was taken through ESC in nine different working meetings over the five years. And now we're here before you. I'm not going to go over all these milestones, but this is to highlight the fact that this has been a five-year journey. And it's been a journey that we've been taking with the ESC the whole time. In the next couple of slides, we're going to review some of the key planned components. As Lucy mentioned, state law requires that we identify a post-event level of service goal. We will look at some of the recommendations that we're going to be making, some of the investments. And as a preview, if you look at this picture, this is the end of an earthquake resilient water supply main. Now, you notice that looks a lot different than the normal end of a pipe. All that structure is meant to increase the resiliency in an earthquake and allow that junction to flex without breaking. The purpose of the master plan is simple. It's to increase the resiliency of our water supply. We do this by identifying ways in which our system can fail and we figure out how do we prevent that future failure. We also need to work with the public to increase their knowledge about the need to supply themselves with water for at least 14 days in the event of a large service interruption. This plan documents our policies and capital recommendations. It's simply a water system plan for major emergencies. Talked a little bit earlier about earthquakes and what could that look like here in Bellevue? Well, it turns out there's two types of earthquakes we could experience. There's the one you're probably most familiar with, the Cascade Event. That is centered off the coast of Washington. And it's a subduction zone event and sometimes referred to as the Big One. But it turns out there's a type of earthquake that's centered closer to home that could be more damaging to our system. This figure depicts the Seattle Fault Zone. Those dashed pink lines roughly follow I-90. And it turns out that even though the earthquake on this fault line is not going to be as powerful, it is going to be more damaging to our system. Because like the picture that we, that you saw earlier for a moment, the streets, this is a thrust fault. So instead of just waving like the Cascadia is going to So instead of just waving, like the Cascadia is going to make the land, land be very wavy, this is going to have the opportunity to have the land displace. And that's going to shear, has the potential to shear our mains and cause a lot more breaks. So let's look at these two different types of earthquakes and what we could expect. First, let's look at the Cascadia Subduction Zone quake. These happen about once every 500 years. We used earthquake data from around the world to model how would our system respond to this type of quake? The answer was over 200 breaks are predicted. This was going to take us over two months to restore service. This is going to result in about $2.3 billion of forecasted economic damage. If we take the economic damage and we divide by the chance it could happen, one in 500, we can annualize this risk. And this risk is about $4.6 million a year, just from the Cascadia zone. So let's look at the Seattle Fault. This happens a lot less often, once in 1,600 years. But it's going to result in over 500 breaks in a three-month recovery period. It's going to be almost eight and a half billion dollars in economic damage. And when we annualize that risk, it's over $5 million a year. Both of these risks added together, the city is currently experiencing $9.8 million a year of risk from earthquakes. Next, we will look at some of our proposed policies. So now that we know the risks or how bad it can get, what level of mitigation is appropriate? That's where setting our post-earthquake level of service goal comes in. Once we have that level of service goal, we can identify what emergency mitigation investments we need to make. This will include developing some new groundwater sources. That will help mitigate the, the cutoff from the regional supply. And this also is important for us, and I, I point this out again, to encourage the public to prepare for a large outage with at least 14 days of water. And of course, we have to coordinate with our other non-governmental utilities that provide services for our customers. So we've identified a goal and we have some list of activities. But how fast should we try to accomplish all of these? So we looked at three different timelines. The first one was pretty aggressive. We looked at trying to complete all of our mitigation activities within 20 years. We found this one is probably unaffordable and maybe unattainable, not just due to our resources internally, but external resources, actually having the number of contractors in the market to do the work. So then we said, all right, well, let's look at another timeline. And this one, we said, all right, we're doing really good work right now with our renewal and replacement program on our aging water mains. What if we just continue to do that work? And as we replace those water mains, they become more resilient. The new materials are better than the old materials. But when we look at this, uh, as a timeline, it takes over 100 years. And we don't feel that, uh, it addresses the risks that we're facing appropriately. So then we took a risk-based, a risk-based approach of about 50 years, targeting our highest-risk things first. And we looked at that, and that is our preferred option. That's the option that we're recommending. And then it's also about a similar timeline that we're finding the other agencies are taking. Sorry. Am I missing a slide? Okay, all right. So let's, um, let's look at what we're proposing as mitigation activities. To increase the, the resiliency of local supply, we're going to, we're going to encourage our regional supplier to become more resilient. And we may even partner with them on some projects. But we also want to have a backup plan, and that's where the emergency wells come in. Once we get the water into the city's system, we want to create a resilient backbone of earthquake-resistant water mains. This backbone is going to connect key points of supplies and our critical customers. And then once again, we want to continue the good work we're doing right now with the, uh, the renewal and replacement program for our aging water mains. But one of the things we want to add to the prioritization of how we select the water mains that we want to replace is we want to put an earthquake resilience factor in that computation about how do we select the pipes? So if we use the 50-year, uh, service goal, and we do all the improvements on the schedules that we're proposing, you can see here that in 2020, that's when the resilience study was done. That's why it's a couple of years old now. Uh, two to three months was our expected outage. By 2035, we can reduce that to one to two months if we continue to invest. By 2050, that's one to four weeks. And by 2070, the end of the 50-year target, we're down to one to 21 days. But most importantly, our critical customers are down to one to seven days without water. Those are places like hospitals and recovery centers. In this table, we're just kind of summing up what I, I already told you that in 2020, we're currently experiencing about $9.8 million of annual risk. If we make the investments that we're proposing, by the end of the period, 2070, we'll have reduced that risk to an annualized risk of only half a million dollars. The benefit to our customers would be $9.3 million a year in reduced risk. That's a reduction of 95%. So this slide is telling us a lot, so I'm going to take some time to make sure we understand what it's telling us. The slide is a, a slide of cumulative spending of our investments between year zero and year 50. Along the bottom of the graph is the time. Along the vertical axis are our cumulative investments in millions of dollars. Now, the good news is that the orange represents our current planned R and R program. Those are investments we've, we're already planning to make. The city's, the, the council's vision, uh, has helped us establish that healthy R and R program. And you can see that that R and R is the majority of the investments. The only new proposed spending is that slice of the blue on top. And the total amount of that proposed investment is $125 million over the 50-year period. That new spending will be focused on the emergency supply wells and establishing that backbone of earthquake resilience water main. I have worked for multiple utilities in my career. And I can share with you that in my experience, Bellevue is unique in its long-term financial forecasting. This allows for Bellevue to take care of things like replacing our system and planning for earthquakes in the most fiscally responsible way with the least impact on our customers. So we are proposing new spending. Does it make sense to spend this money from the customer's point of view? We're looking at three different time horizons, 15, 30, and 50 years. And you can see that the seismic benefit, the reduction in risk that we receive for the new spending that we're proposing is always above one, which means it is a positive benefit versus cost relationship. And I'll remind you that new spending is for those backbone water supply and the new wells. Public engagement was a very important part of developing this plan. We received over a thousand surveys back from the 5,000 solicited. 20% return rate is pretty good, but we weren't satisfied. We reached out and interviewed all the critical customers that we could identify and asked them what their emergency water supply plan was and what did they expect from us? Then we reached out to over 20 community-based organizations like Hopeling, asking them the same questions. What are you going to do? And what do you need from us? Or what are you expecting from us? We learned a lot from the survey. We learned that there's very strong, uh, support for doing this work. Over 77% of the survey respondents said it is very important for us to plan for this. They also, the surveyors also supported our decision to prioritize getting the critical customers up and going again first. But one of the things we did learn from the survey is that we have a lot of work to do when it comes to working with the public and educating them on how much water they need in case of an emergency. Less than 10% of the respondents currently are planning for a 14-day, uh, emergency water supply. And with that, I'll hand it back to Lucy.
Great, thank you, Eric. So in summary, if we implement this plan and we will reduce the risk of economic damage to our community from water outage by 95%, as Eric indicated earlier. This will reduce the water service disruptions from three months to just days. Um, that is the value of this plan. And so based on our assessment and the support that we heard from the community for resiliency planning, uh, our recommendation is to adopt the Emergency Water Supply Master Plan. And just so at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Vice Chair Wong to provide, uh, the input from the Environmental Services Commission.
Thank you, Lucy. Is this?
We can hear you.
Can you hear?
Yep.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor, Newland House and City Councilmembers. As you know, this Environmental Services Commission's charge is to review and provide input on short and long-term planning and policy development for the Utilities Department. The commission has worked with the utility staff since 2018 to review and shape the development of the Emergency Mass, Water Supply Master Plan. The commission held nine working sessions over the past five years, including sessions on the purpose of the master plan, earthquake hazards in the Pacific Northwest, and strategies to responsibly address the risks and impacts of a major earthquake to the city of Bellevue. The commission endorses the proposed policies and post-earthquake service level goals in the master plan. These policies and goals are important for driving the Utilities Department's actions for earthquake mitigation and response. Some of the key elements of the plan that the Environmental Services Commission especially finds important include prioritizing water service restoration to customers that serve immediate life safety and community recovery functions. Those are the ones that Eric mentioned, such as hospitals and recovery centers. We also find important the investing in water system improvements to meet established earthquake mitigation goals. And lastly, conducting outreach and education to residents and businesses on how to prepare for water service interruptions in the event of a major earthquake. In conclusion, the commission believes that the recommendations in the master plan are responsive to the risks of a major earthquake to our community. And they are both attainable and worth the investments within the timeframes described in the plan, which is 50 years. Therefore, it's the commission's recommendation, or endorsing this master plan, and recommends that the council adopt the plan. Thank you.
So at this time, we'll answer any questions you have for us.
Thank you. Um, Vice Chair Wong, thank you so much for being here tonight. I just wanted to clarify, what was the vote on the commission on this plan?
It was a unanimous vote.
Terrific, thank you. Councilmember Lee, you are the liaison to this commission. Would you like to start us off?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's my pleasure to, uh, be a liaison from the City Council to Environmental Services Commission. As the council liaison, I have worked closely with the commission in reviewing the Emergency Water Supply Master Plan and recommendation. I strongly support the recommendation of staff and the commission. The plan aligns with the groundwork our council put in place in 1995 with the Capital Infrastructure Renewal and Replacement Program. This is unique, as you mentioned. I want to just point it out. We had the foresight, uh, forethought back then to ensure we are investing in our infrastructure resiliency. The common element in the presentation by staff is that a natural disaster may threaten our ability to deliver safe and reliable drinking water. Access to clean and safe drinking water is vital for the health and safety of our community in the event of a natural disaster. Our city relies on water for critical functions and services, including firefighting, hospitals, sanitation, and essential businesses. Thank you to utilities staff and Environmental Services Commission for the time you have put into developing this plan and ensuring we have a plan to mitigate the impact of a major earthquake and better recover the water service our community handsome. So I fully support your recommendation. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, uh, very, very good report and work done on this. It, the question I think people will have, and just in general public and even think about it here, is, uh, it's really great to have this plan in place. Uh, 50 years is a long time, and what happens in the, in the meantime? 10 years from now, something happens. How do we, I, I guess this is based on, you must have pretty good data that indicate that something like this is off in the future for a lot of reasons. I mean, we never know exactly, but, so I know we, we have something built into that plan. So it's not, it's not deemed urgent right now, in the next 10 years, hopefully. And the 50 years seems like, uh, uh, you know, a time period that is rational. And part of it is just the cost and how to get it in place and timing and all that. So you have to get a, you're looking for the sweet spot on it, basically. It sounds like you've done that. Is there, if, on the very, very small chance that something happens before that time, before, well, it's not, you're going to be doing things as you go along, so it's 50 years. So there'd be a lot of things in place. And I assume that you're looking at the more vulnerable pieces first and all that. And I think that's important to, for the community to know that this is, we're not just saying, okay, we'll do something in 50 years. We're going to work so that by 50 years, we will have it, all these pieces in place. Because it's, I don't think people realize how, and I've seen those charts and everything, how, uh, how this, how, how much infrastructure is and where it is and all that. And we know from some current events that have happened when water, um, all that breaks, a water line breaks and all, there's a lot of problems. Uh, so I, I really appreciate the work you've done. And I, you know, was liaison for the commission one, at, um, one year, or for two years, and working with, of course, Cascade Water Lines on similar things. And I, it's just, uh, very, very good work. And appreciate both the, the commission's, uh, support on that and the work you've done on that. And looking forward to, uh, getting it in place. And the sooner the better.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. Councilmember Zion.
Yes, thank you. I too, um, appreciate and applaud your work. Five years of persistence to get to this point. Because when we think about it, water is life. We can't survive without water. And so being able to be thoughtful about mitigating hazards is really prudent governance. And so getting this system resiliency done is, is really important. Um, a couple of things I was thinking about, and that is, um, you brought this up earlier. I don't know how many people in our community realizes they need 14 days of water in case of an emergency. So perhaps that is, um, some outreach and awareness and education that could be done and through to our community, as well as maybe through our school district, through the kids and them learning as well. Appreciate the fact that you're prioritizing the more critical infrastructure first and that we're using the 50-year horizon for this because that's best practice from other cities as well to right-size the not 20, not 100, but somewhere in between. On the expected outage, you know, I started thinking about the fact that if we actually had an earthquake in our area, the two to three months actually may be optimistic because everyone else will be trying to find those same resources to, uh, repair their water mains. So I really appreciate getting this done. I was looking at slide 19 that shows the new spending in blue and the existing R and R in orange. And it looks like we're not, we're, we're going to be slowly increasing the new funding. And then as we get into the outer years, a lot more funding that's going to be needed. So as, as we think about our risks, tolerance, I guess my question would be, um, I believe that right now, all of the, the utility spending is, we, we don't take on any debt in order to pay for that. So it's all cash on hand, I guess. And my question might be that if this is something that is a risk mitigation, we might want to just talk about, uh, the funding options for the CIP investments. And if we are comparing increasing utility rates versus looking at whether some of the projects, we, we might actually want to have a conversation around, actually using only cash or, um, many of our other projects actually have. actually have a CIP that's funded through, you know, other means. So just something to think about. Really excited that we got this in place and happy to vote in support. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you.
Eric, and Vice Chair Wong, and Lucy. I'm so thrilled that you're taking over this such a well-run department and following up the great example that Nav had for so many years as leading this department. So, great, great presentation. I think it's, as you've noted, fully in line with council priorities and really in line with our view of resiliency. So I too am very much in support of this, except a couple of quick questions. Number one, I think, Eric, you mentioned about the prioritizing of the highest risks. Just curious if that is strictly based on materials, or is that based on neighborhoods? Is that based on what? I'd like to just understand how you prioritize those risks and what those risks look like. On the outreach piece, I'd love to know, beyond the organizations that you reached out to, did you reach out to neighborhood associations as well to solicit their feedback? And if not, I'd encourage you to do that, especially if we follow some of these additional outreach measures to let them know about the 14-day water supply, et cetera. And then lastly, if I'm sitting at home, and we've had these other conversations about, you know, there are challenges right now that a lot of families in our community have in terms of paying for rent or being able to afford a home here and groceries and gas and all the rest of it. So if I'm sitting at home watching this right now, I'm thinking, you've made the case for it, makes sense, agree with the plan, how's it going to impact me with, under this new spending? Are we going to... Is that mainly going to be through ratepayer increases, it sounds like, or are we going to dip into some reserves as well? Or what's going to be the bottom-line impact to our residents? And I know it's increasing small every year and then a little bit larger near the end, but how are you going to calculate that in terms of communicating that to residents? And this shouldn't be anything new. We've always, you know, with our policy of continually reinvesting in our infrastructure, however, they might want to start preparing now already for some of these rate increases. So, thank you.
I just want to remind everyone, this is a discussion we have yet to have as well, we will be having. But go ahead.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes. So how did we prioritize the highest risk? And it's a combination of things. We've identified where the backbones are, and so if we trace the backbone lines and we find that there is a susceptible material on that line, that automatically bumps it up to a high risk, because we really want that line to be functioning. We also have mapped the ground accelerations that we expect, and so there's areas that are going to move more, and so if our backbone's going through there, we want to make sure that's really strong through there. But there's also things like water pump stations. So if there's a water pump station that isn't built to the newest design standards that are earthquake resilient, then we might want to prioritize that pump station replacement, because it's vital to be able to pump the water in the case of the earthquake.
Maybe I could address the funding question. So rate increases will eventually be needed to fund the new investments that we are proposing. These will be considered as part of future budgets, and so more conversations on that. But we certainly won't be seeking any available grant opportunities to help mitigate rate increases. Our plan would be to implement a series of modest rate increases over a long period of time, because that will help with affordability, as well as make sure that each generation of customers that use the system pay their share of costs. If we were to, say, implement rate increases, say, over a 20-year timeframe, as a rough order of magnitude, what that would look like is potentially 1/4 of 1% rate increase each year. So that gives you a sense of the type of rate decrease it would take to fund these investments.
And then just a last question about the outreach to the neighborhood associations.
I don't recall reading if that happened. I will look into that, but it's... So the plan is directing us to do more, and that is definitely something that we can target in the future.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Berksdale.
All right. Thanks for the presentation. I don't have a lot of questions, just one. Are we able to... Do we have sensors, like monitoring movement of our pipes currently? And I guess I'm just trying to get a sense of like how the system sort of gracefully transitions or fails over, like in the event of an earthquake, for example. I get the post-event, this happened, and how do we recover, you know? But what does it look like going up to that event?
So the city currently has a SCADA system. This is a system that is connecting our BSC, the Business Service Center, to things like pump stations. And so a pump station will tell us if it's in trouble. We don't have anything on pipes, but if we start to see alarms along the line, we can surmise that something bad has happened in that area, and we would quickly send crews out to investigate.
Is it significant to have sensors or that sort of visibility only at the pump station versus along the pipe?
Well, the pipes are connecting essentially the organs, right? And so we have sensors on our organs. And I said pump stations, but we also have sensors on reservoirs. So if there's a main break and we start to see a reservoir going down really quickly, we kind of can quickly identify, what area do we need to focus on to make that go down, turn some valves off, and make that water loss stop?
Got it. I guess my last question, kind of building up to it, is just, is there anything that should be in the plan as well to, in terms of predicting or kind of getting a sense of when there's a risk? Is there anything further that you think should be considered as part of the plan?
Yeah, as part of our renewal and replacement program right now, we assign a risk to every length of pipe in the city. And then that risk is associated with its age and its material, and then now it's going to have a seismic vulnerability factor part of it. And so, yeah, we have a risk-based approach to all of our projects that we do.
Yeah. Thank you. I support the recommendation.
Thank you. Really good presentation, really good description, the packet as well, which I appreciated. I think that preventative investments are some of the greatest work a municipality can do, and I really appreciate the five years that you have spent coming up with this recommendation, and five years that we didn't have to have an incident, fortunately. So is this something that we can bring back on consent? Okay. Okay. I'm going to ask the deputy mayor to make a motion.
Sorry, Mayor. I move to direct staff to return with the resolution to adopt the Emergency Water Supply Master Plan on consent at a future meeting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you so much. And with that, we are adjourned.